Good evening and welcome to the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And the recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I am here, so all council members are present. Now we move to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Councilmember have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We move by Mayor Potem Holloway, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Is there any discussion? Councilor, or Mayor Potem Holloway?
Like to move item, remove item number two off the agenda for the roundtable, no longer required for this evening. May I have a second?
I think we need number one.
Number one, sorry.
Yes.
Number one, let's remove number one for the evening. May I have a second?
Second.
Remove by Mayor Potem Holloway, second by Councilwoman Johnson, to remove the first executive session off the agenda. Any discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? Any other changes to the, only the roundtable agenda? Only roundtable agenda. Okay, CNN approving the final agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? And the motion passes as the amended agenda. With that, the executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one B, to consider the selection of a site for acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause the likelihood of increased price lasting approximately, we'll say forty-five minutes, we'd be back by six forty-five. Those attending will be City Clerk Dina Burke, City Administrator Mike Chambliss, Finance Director Drew Bootay, and Community Development Director Mona Davis. And we will be actually upstairs in the Mountside Conference Room. No action will be taken following the conclusion of the executive session. The recording will pause. And we will return to open session to adjourn from the meeting and then restart the meeting at seven P M. So we will put this on pause and let's head upstairs. We have returned from our executive session, it is now six forty-seven, and I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Move by Mayor Potem Holloway, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? Councilwoman Watten?
No, I was trying to catch the door for.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. You already voted, does it pose nay? Any nay? CNN, motion passes and we are adjourned at six forty-eight and we will return for seven P M for our council meeting. Council, this brings us to our regular meeting of the City Council meeting at seven P M. We just completed a special meeting prior to this. Let the record show that all council are present. Council, please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance, and Councilwoman Johnson, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to our first item of regular business, which is to approve the agenda. Councilmember have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Move by Mayor Potem Holloway, second by Councilwoman Johnson. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, with.
So, Councilwoman Washington?
Yes, I would like to remove from consent agenda, Agenda Bill two-five dash zero eight-two.
Okay. And that does not require a vote, we will remove that and that will actually follow the consent agenda in that order. Mayor Potem Holloway?
I would like to remove item number fifteen, the executive session, from the end of the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, third. Remove by Mayor Potem Holloway, second by which one? Councilwoman Cotton?
Councilmember Christian.
Christiansen?
I said it too, but said it everybody.
All right.
Put them all down.
Your discussion. You see none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? I think it's so, going back to the final approval of the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? And the agenda is approved as amended. So the first thing we have tonight is a presentation from King County Search and Rescue Association by Carrie Lee Gannon, who's the Executive Director of King County Search and Rescue Association, so welcome Carrie Lee.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Ross, council members, staff. Thank you so much for your time tonight, we're really excited to be able to share the work that our wonderful volunteers have been doing in your community. So, next slide, please. King County Search and Rescue Association advocates on behalf of the nine member units that make up King County Search and Rescue. You have members throughout King County in all of your various districts, and those nine member units work cohesively together in order to make the best effort to bring your loved ones home. Next slide. The timeline began back in nineteen forty-eight and continues today. They keep pushing that innovative edge, testing technologies in different applications to make SAR safer, better, and more effective for the communities that they live in. Next slide. Within Washington State, there's between nine hundred and a thousand missions a year. Between twenty-one and twenty-four, four hundred and eighty-three of those missions were within King County alone, and that tells you just how busy those nine member units are. And there's actually only one SAR coordinator in all of King County that coordinates the six hundred-plus volunteers that do the work. Next slide. These are the stats between January one, two thousand and twenty-one and December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. As you can see, of the four hundred and eighty-three missions, it was concentrated really heavily within the Snow Valley area. That doesn't mean it was all Snow Valley residents. We have a lot of tourism, and that's actually something that we've been tracking for the last couple of years to see where are people coming from, so we can really tailor that public outreach and preventative SAR messaging and make it more effective to the people that are coming to this region. But it also means that your small businesses and your communities kind of bear the brunt for a lot of that work and the support for SAR. And we're really working on efforts to get the messaging out outside of Snow Valley to say, it's not the Snoqualmie residents necessarily that are getting lost, hurt, or need the rescues out in that space. Next slide. SAR is not just backcountry. In the last five years, we've seen an uptick in trends for crime scene support, evidence searches, our vulnerable population, which includes dementia, Alzheimer's, and autistic children. And in fact, right now, we were supposed to have three volunteers with us today, but they're out on a mission right now, trying to bring a loved one home in that vulnerable population. So they're trying to find them before dark tonight. Next slide. By the numbers, outdoor recreation combined two point two percent GDP. SAR receives none of that funding, it's front-loaded, it's not the back-end funding support. We're very lucky to live in Washington State where we do have a SAR manager at the state level that promotes, advocates, and supports SAR through Washington EMD. However, only about fifty-eight thousand of that is seen back at the units for reimbursement, and there's thirty-nine counties that do SAR. And so when you look at that divided amongst fifty-eight thousand, it's a very small amount that comes back to your SAR volunteers. Operational expenses for King County Search and Rescue exceeds four hundred thousand a year, and that is either donors, corporate sponsors, or the volunteers themselves that pay to do the job. Next slide. So what are we working on today?
Great.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benson?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
That's it, people donate to have search and rescue, that's not, that's not something that's funded by?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
Donors.
Idiot.
Donors support search and rescue throughout Washington State. Yes. So what are we working on today? Communication and messaging, that's why we're here tonight.
Good second.
To educate and let people know that these volunteers do it selflessly and passionately, but we're looking at broadening support for those volunteers. Sustainable funding and growth, to include disaster preparedness. They are a force multiplier in all of the communities that they reside in, from drones to e-mountain bikes to their emergency workers certified throughout the state of Washington. So when there is a disaster, they can be called upon to help and provide aid in any of the communities that they live in. Organizational development, we want a permanent home to call home. And then volunteer recruitment and retention, so understanding and supporting the why, so we can better support those volunteers. So they'll keep coming back to do the work, that's so important. Next slide. This is an initiative we are working on to get out into the communities. We're reliant on the pictogram, so it's easily translatable if you think World Cup and some of our tourists that come in. English speaking is not necessarily the predominant language that's spoken for our outdoor recreationists. So these pictograms are internationally known, people can understand them. We're going to get them out into small businesses and we're working with some of our partners to get them in spaces like Airbnbs, lodging, buses, that type of thing. So people are more prepared when they go out and recreate in our beautiful Snow Valley. Next slide.
I do have two volunteers with me today, and I'm very proud to bring up Kelsey from Explorer Search and Rescue to tell more about her why.
Thank you, I'm really happy to be here tonight, my name is Kelsey Rudd. I have been a member of King County Explorer Search and Rescue for over five years now. I was born and raised here in King County in Woodinville, I've lived in Scattle, I live now in Bellevue. And so I have grown up with a deep love of the woods and the wilderness, and I think that is the most special part about where we live. And so I have a desire to share it with everyone, and I have a desire for everyone to love it and to be safe. So I joined Search and Rescue to share that love and to support others in their journey discovering the wilderness. My first mission when I graduated in two thousand and twenty was actually a young man in Renton who had autism, and he had been lost in the woods of Renton overnight. His family was terrified, and we went out looking for him. After several hours of searching, calling out his name, my team heard him. And he had gotten lost and trapped in some blackberries in a valley. And I remember they handed me a machete and they said, "Go get him." And we, if any of you know the blackberries around here, we hacked through those blackberries and we got him out. And having, finding someone on my first mission, I was hooked. I was hooked on that feeling of how amazing it was to reunite this young man with his family, that sense of relief and that sense of peace. Not all missions are, you know, that successful. There was another mission later that summer of a young man and his dog who went missing while they were backpacking. We searched for weeks, people spending twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, looking for this young man. He was never found. But being able to be there with his family, to know that they knew we were doing all we could to find him, and whatever amount of peace that brought them, that really stayed with me. Now I've been able to participate more in public outreach in what we call preventative SAR, so that we don't have those kind of missions. I think it's funny that in search and rescue, we really try to put ourselves out of business. We're doing everything we can to not have to search and rescue for people, but being able to go out and share our knowledge with the community. The people that I work with are the most incredibly dedicated, talented, and hardcore people you will ever meet. Almost all of us have full-time jobs, and we do this unpaid because we love it and because we want to help people. So that's, that's why I do it, and that's what makes King County Search and Rescue so special, is the privilege to serve our community while doing what we love. Thank you.
Let's see, next slide. Well, four by four is one of the ones, the representative that was going to be here tonight, but is off supporting an ongoing mission. They are a pretty amazing outfit that has transportation, they do communications, they do logistics, and most of the missions just can't get by without them. Next slide. Okay, well, I guess I don't, I don't get my own particular slide, but that's okay. I'm a member of the incident support team. I've been with King County Search and Rescue for about eight years professionally and personally. My husband and I and our son have lived in, well, we started off in North Bend, now we live near Carnation. Twenty-five years ago, my parents were residents of North Bend before that. My husband and I are both retired members of the Air Force. Why did I join? Well, my son was also very active in Boy Scouts in the valley with Troop Four Sixty-Six, which is extremely busy, and they would go on lots of adventures, he became quite outdoors guy. And then he went up to school in Bellingham at Western. Well, one night, he and a friend were going cross-country on some kind of an outing to go up close to Mount Baker. And I knew he was out there, and the next day or early, I got a call. And I said, "Well, where are you?" And he said, "We're at St. Joseph's Hospital in Bellingham." And I said, "How did you get there?" Well, it turned out that his friend had slipped and fallen about a hundred and fifty feet down a very steep slope, and the friend was the one carrying the climbing rope. So my friend, my son, could not go down to rescue him, but fortunately, we had had this discussion, and he was carrying a personal locator beacon. And he was able to summon help first that way, and secondly, by text, and the Huachan County Sheriff first responded and then realized that this was one for Navy Whidby helicopter, which is just an awesome asset, and they saved my son's friend's life. And with my background in the outdoors and in the military and having been part of a Boy Scout troop for ten years, I thought, you know, search and rescue and I would fit together pretty darn well. And I'm pleased that I made that decision. I echo what Kelsey said about the volunteers, unpaid professionals. We not only do extensive training in search and rescue, but each one of us brings to the table, whether you're from a tech world or you work for a small business. So many different skills are intermingled, and they all come to play in a very powerful way. You know, and so why do we stick around? Yeah, we spend our own money. We go out and advocate for funding, we love donations, some people work hard to get grants for us. And yeah, we're thankful for all of that, but it's great to work with a like-minded bunch of people, doing something that's challenging, also doing something that is extremely meaningful. I've been impressed the way we are part of the county's emergency response infrastructure. When that nine-one-one call comes in, whether it be from a cell phone, a text message, or a satellite beacon, and the nine-one-one caller thinks it's appropriate for search and rescue, they send it out to the sheriff's department, as Carrie Lee said, we have a SAR coordinator, and then they will task out which pieces of the SAR puzzle that they need for that mission. Many times, we're working shoulder to shoulder, hand to hand, with fire and rescue. They may be the first on the scene, even out on a trail, but if they get out on the trail and someone is injured and can't walk out on their own, the typical team of three or four fire and rescue on a crew is not enough to pack them out, so they call search and rescue and we bring more people. And then that way, often, we'll relieve fire and rescue, and they can go back to being on call, to being ready to do things that only they can do. Fighting fires and responding to accidents and other things like that. We also work very closely with both the sheriff's department and police departments when it comes to especially things like lost people. And as Kelsey mentioned, we have an opportunity to interact with friends and family. I'll just say one mission that stuck in my mind. Several years ago, there was a young woman, I think she was probably in her early twenties. She was well-prepared, she was going on a solo backpacking trip, starting off on one of the trailheads off of I- ninety, and then you can go up over the mountains and you can end up down into the drainage of the Middle Fork of the Snoqualmie River. Well, she was supposed to take about four days, and when she didn't show up, her parents are actually the ones that called and said, "She's overdue." It was a very large search, both people coming from the I- ninety side, people coming out from Middle Fork Road. I was working in the command post and just being able to watch as her parents were there, knowing she had been rescued. But then the four-by-four unit and the team who had rescued her brought her in, and watching that reunion of mom and dad and their daughter, being parent for myself and also being a search and rescue volunteer was just, you know, that's one of the reasons I, I'm going to keep doing what I do with search and rescue for hopefully many, many more years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have time to share this video, but if I could ask, if you were to scan this on your phone and revisit it later, it's a very powerful way to share the story of King County Search and Rescue throughout the community. It's a beautiful story of both the reunion of some loved ones and what promoted or prompted them to join. It's loud. Do not recommend playing it here, but thank you again for your time, Mayor Miller, council members, and staff.
Or Mayor Ross.
Yeah, Mayor Ross, I'm sorry. Mayor Ross, I apologize.
Right, so we really thank you for your presentation, it's just kind of a powerful reminder of everything that you do for our communities and keeping people safe and bringing people back to their loved ones, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think we want to get a picture, so first of all, you have comments, Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you very much, I've had the privilege and pleasure of working with Search and Rescue through my previous work as a volunteer with Snoqualmie Fire Department, and actually several of your volunteers were volunteers with me. And so I know what a group of dedicated, passionate individuals you are, and again, just blows my mind when, I mean, you folks are so driven in your, with those areas that you love the most, that you invest your own money to provide equipment is really speaks volumes. So thank you for what you all do, we so appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Watten?
I also want to echo Councilmember Cotton, it's the former Boy Scout Chair for the district. Appreciate having that option, the window into what explorers, search and rescue do. But I think the more meaningful thing is, these volunteers don't just go out to find people, they spend hundreds of hours preparing. And as Councilmember Cotton mentioned, the equipment oftentimes are the volunteers, and they have rigs that they've, they've, they've put together to make sure that people that come here to recreate are brought home safely. And I also want to call out Christine, you didn't introduce yourself, Christine Nelson. And she's the Communications Coordinator for SAR, so gratitude unlimited towards what you do. And Carrie Lee is the very first paid Executive Director, and we're so fortunate to have her in our community. So thank you, and the hundreds, hundreds of volunteers that come out and do this all the time. We don't see it, but it's those people that you save that appreciate the work you do, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Benson?
I just, I'd just like to apologize, I have not appreciated Search and Rescue at all. I had no idea that, that this was depending on a successful bake sale and just, it's so shocking to me that, that are, that if one of our loved ones gets lost, it's dependent on people who are willing to give hundreds of hours of their lives and their own funds to go and save them. And I am simultaneously appalled and so overjoyed to learn that there is such a wealth of love in the community to take on that responsibility. This has been very eye-opening, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to them.
Right. Any other comments? I think we'll get a picture with certain volunteers. Great. Good.
Where would you like it, Mayor Ross?
So next item, we have a proclamation, it says Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and this is a joint proclamation with North Bend. So, October of each year is recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, where we encourage all residents to participate in educational activities. Together, we can make meaningful impact in the fight against breast cancer. And you can read the full proclamation online. The next one is Fire Prevention Week. So whereas the city is committed to ensuring safety and security of all those in living in and visiting Snoqualmie, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and most electronics used in homes contain those, there's actually a list on there. The National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in fire, increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education. And this year's theme is Charge the Fire Safety. So lithium-ion batteries in your home, so serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling batteries safely. And therefore, we have Fire Prevention Week as of October fifth through the eleventh. And you can read the rest of the full proclamation online, as we have Chief Bailey, who's here, will say a few words.
Evening, council. Just to point out some of the things that we do for Fire Prevention Week, we've done it for many, many years here in the city. We try to visit all the preschools through third-grade classes, depending on whether the teacher is able to fit us into their schedule. For us, it doesn't necessarily happen on the week of fire prevention, sometimes it becomes Fire Prevention Month, just because it takes us that long to get to all the classes. But that is something that the firefighters enjoy, getting out, seeing all as many kids as we can, and going over the materials for the year. As Mayor Ross said, this year is lithium battery safety, something that's been a very big issue in the fire service. I think we've all seen some of the news headlines. You go online, you see some of the videos, when these batteries do go off, it's almost like a firework with the heat and the sparks and the intensity that these fires burn. So it's really important to just to highlight some of the things for these lithium-ion batteries, because we all have them in our house, they're in pretty much every device that you can find nowadays. So just some important tips to point out is, it's not only these batteries. If they're, you know, for sure, if they're dropped or damaged, they need to be disposed of, but also just they could be internally, they could short-circuit just because they weren't made correctly. So it's important that you buy batteries that are certified, and you can look on the packaging to make sure that it's a certified battery, nationally recognized for a testing laboratory. But the biggest one, again, is if there's any kind of damage to these batteries, and when we're talking about damage, we're saying if you notice any odor, change in color, if they heat up, if you start to notice they're heating up, there's a change in shape, there's any leaking from the battery, or they're making- there's a change in shape, there's any leaking from the battery, or they're making odd noises. And that's obviously a major sign to to get the battery outside, to call us if needed, but to get it disposed of. For disposing of these batteries, what they recommend is taking it to a recycle area. For us, closest one would be Home Depot and Lowe's in Issaquah. But they only take a certain type of batteries. They only take rechargeable batteries. You know, think screwdriver battery for your power drill. There's a lot of other batteries out there. So there is a website that you can go to. It's calltorecycle.org. And that's two as in the number, not the the letter. And they give you all the information that you can type in your address. They say where to go. They even actually will let you recycle them through the mail for certain types. They can send it out. So that's the best place is if you have any of these batteries is go to calltorecycle.org to look to see how to get rid of them. Because like I said, it doesn't have to be a big, huge battery like, you know, something that would happen from a e-bike or anything like that. It's could be as small as something in your cell phone. We've had calls for people that have had these small rechargeable devices in their couch cushion and it caught on fire just because it was it started to react and then the heat from that enclosed space. So just wanted to point those out. As Mayor said, there's a lot of information online on the city website and on the proclamation you can go to to read more about these. And of course, if you have any issues, if you have any concerns, nine one one will get us out there and we'll take care of it. The Eastside Hazmat Team, which we're a part of, is charged with going on these calls and safely disposing of these batteries in the area. So that's something that we can do. If you are unsure about if it's can be recycled, if you should touch it, just call nine one one and we'll come out and we'll take care of it.
Thank you, Chief Bailey. Any questions? Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Next one is Hindu Heritage Month. So whereas Hindu Heritage Month is celebrated every October, which coincides with major Hindu holidays such as Navratri. And whereas Hindu Americans represent a variety of ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladesh, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan in Frisian, Caribbean and European descent. And whereas there are an estimated 1.2 billion Hindus worldwide and approximately 2.5 million Hindu Americans living throughout the United States. And whereas our community has benefited from the many innovations of Hindu Americans, including including. Are you are you a Vedic? Are you a Vedic? Okay. Thank you. Medical, classical art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature and community services. And whereas we commit to embracing diversity and inclusion by paying tribute to Hindu heritage through education, acknowledgement and celebration within our community. And whereas we are proud to recognize the positive influence of Hindu Americans on economic vitality, growth and well being of the Snoqualmie Valley. Now therefore, I, Catherine Ross, the Mayor of City Snoqualmie, Washington, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty five as Hindu Heritage Month and urge all residents to celebrate the contributions made by Hindu Americans. And we have quite a few of our Hindu community leaders here today. And so I'm gonna come around and maybe if you can come up and introduce yourself and we will take a picture.
So that's the one she decides to read.
Hello, everyone. Namaste. I am Apeksha Sharma, one of the representatives of the Indian American community from city of Snoqualmie. It is an huge honor for us for receiving this proclamation on the first day of our Hindu festival called Navratri. And it is also a beautiful coincidence to be receiving this proclamation with breast cancer awareness and fire prevention, because we are celebrating the feminine energy, which is victory over good and evil, and also resonates with the other initiatives we are also celebrating today. We sincerely thank the city leadership for processing and awarding this proclamation. For centuries, Hindu philosophy has taught us Vasudev Kutubhukam. The word is the word this mantra means the world is one family. And today is that day where this spirit unites us across the cultures, faiths and communities. We are also delighted to share that this collaboration with various community organizations, the Hindu American community engages with a Seva Diwali, a food campaign during this festive season. And in twenty twenty four, nationwide, we donated over seven hundred thousand pounds of food to local banks and shelters, supporting those in need of our in need in our neighborhoods. Thank you so much again, Catherine Ross, for this felicitation. And on behalf of our committee members, we are honored to receive this honor. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. This is Nikhil. We have been here since twenty seventeen, so you're like close to eight years. And really enjoy the neighborhood. Kids have grown up here. So yeah, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rohit and I'm living here since twenty twenty one. I have two kids, really enjoying this place and yeah, looking for more support in this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ross. Definitely, this is a great honor for us. At the same time, I would also add not only Vasudev Kutubhukam, it's also Sarve Bhavantu Sukhina, which means that we as a family should be prosperous. And that's the what that's what actually the culture of Hindu heritage is all about. Thank you so much for again, sharing and giving us this opportunity of having this particular proclamation from the city of Snoqualmie. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rajat Shagala and I've been living in Snoqualmie from twenty eighteen. And I think this is a very beautiful town. I mean, I moved from Kirkland. But I think I really love this place. I mean, with the nature and everything they're close to. And I think thank you, Mayor, for providing this opportunity to.
So next we're gonna have public comment. And those that we in any time you everyone's welcome to stay. We do have a long agenda. So we're not our feelings aren't hurt if anyone gives them leaves. So we have public comment that starts now. And we provide residents opportunity to discuss items that are not on the agenda. No online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. Written comments are encouraged and can be submitted in person. First, a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have elected officials perform their duty on behalf of the city. So it's limited to three minutes each. Please wait till we recognize and state your name and city of residence. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individuals. Permit comments during this portion of the meeting should be limited to topics currently concerning current future requested city projects. And that they should not be regarding any candidates. So yeah.
Thank you.
Kate Moscatoline, North Bend. On behalf of the Board of Valley Pool Together, I'd like to thank you for considering an appointment to a representative from city council to participate in the regional public pool discussion. The National Recreation and Parks Association recommends levels of service for recreational amenities, including public pools. They recommend one public pool per twenty thousand residents, expanding the fraction. That's five pools per one hundred thousand residents. According to the Trust for Public Lands, the average level of service in major metropolitan areas of the U.S. in twenty twenty five is about two public pools per one hundred thousand residents. In King County, we have one public pool per one hundred thousand residents, with most of them concentrated on the west side in Seattle. East King County is effectively a pool desert. We could build multiple regional public pools on the east side, and they would only be a drop in the bucket toward meeting the need in our area for affordable and accessible aquatics. Part of life in Snoqualmie Valley is sharing resources and relying on our neighbor. It's how we get things done and access the resources we all need to make sure our families are healthy, happy and safe. Our school district, Snoqualmie Valley Transportation, the Mount Sinai Senior Center, the Chamber of Commerce, the Rural Tourism Support Program, the Snoqualmie Valley Preservation Alliance and Meadowbrook Farm are all great examples of regional collaboration that benefit and enrich the lives of valley residents and wouldn't be possible without us figuring out how to work together effectively. And Snoqualmie Valley residents are asking us to do that now. They are already accustomed to seeing a public pool as one of these shared resources and benefits, regardless of city or park district boundaries. This past summer, one thousand two hundred and forty-three swimmers enrolled in swim classes at our only public pool. Forty-five percent of those signups were from out of district residents, mostly from the city of Snoqualmie. Both our King County and state representatives have communicated loud and clear that they need to see Snoqualmie Valley governments working together on one pool project that will adequately serve our entire region as well as our school district before we can expect support. It's time to formalize and expand on that sense of community and shared resource residents already have by working together toward a new, adequately sized public pool that will fully meet the regional need for all of Snoqualmie Valley. We hope Snoqualmie will consider appointing a representative to take part in developing this vision. Thank you.
Anyone else that want to do public comment? If so, please raise your hand. Right, right. Yes, absolutely. Please state your name and city in your three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, my name is Rohit Kumar. I live in Snoqualmie. I had a lifesaving event with me. I want to thank this community. I want to thank Snoqualmie for that. You're calling me. Sorry. Yeah, I got a cardiac attack last year and I was at home, but I really want to thank, I really want to thank the fire department, the police department. They were like so quick. It was a cardiac attack. Only my wife was with me and she called nine one one and we got like a support that I can't imagine like, and they saved me. Like first, I think ten minutes or fifteen minutes are very crucial. So those were like the lifesaving and I really want to thank.
Thank you. Is somebody else? Did you have your hand up to see your name and city residents?
Hi, my name is Ross. Hi, Ross. I live in Fall City. My issue I want to talk about are these motorized bikes. We're all seeing these electric bikes. There's a lot of them. A lot of younger kids have them. And I own one. I don't take it outside of my neighborhood. But they can go pretty fast. Mine goes up to thirty miles per hour, but I know that some of these kids have ones that go much faster than that. And they do not ride them responsibly. I've seen bikes designed for one person with three kids stacked on top, none of them wearing helmets. I heard of a kid on the ridge who ran from the police after being confronted about riding unsafely. And that is a very dangerous situation because he could have hit someone or got hit by someone else. And I feel like there should be some sort of like regulation with these e-bikes. I've seen them ridden around freeway entrances and exits, which is also extremely dangerous. They don't take in regard for like traffic safety. They don't signal. Just they're the people who ride them are irresponsible. And I feel like there should be maybe a need for a permit or like some sort of legal thing, because these are motorized vehicles. Like they can match a car's speed limit, you know? Yeah, that's just something I think about a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, public comments? If so, please raise your hand. Right. See none? Public comment is now closed. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, it was the very last minute thought because we had a fire department talking about how to dispose the batteries. So I am a huge proponent of saving the the natural resources around us, right? And we do follow the rule of not using the plastic or disposing the plastics very carefully. And batteries are also one of these categories because our city or our we do not have a support system to dispose the batteries with our trash. So Recology is one of the companies which is also working with King County. And they do collect the batteries from individual homes. And it will be great if we can have the similar services in Snoqualmie community as well, so that it's not easy for our community members to dispose the batteries in trash. I do collect the I do have resources to dispose the batteries, but if I go to Recology, I have to pay a certain amount like fifty dollars to pay for certain batteries, which I don't think so is very comfortable or convenient option. So that's my request to add a disposable service for batteries as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, you'll have to say your name and city, please.
My name is Apeksha Sharma and I am from city of Snoqualmie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seen that? So public comment is now closed. And we'll move on to the consent agenda, which contains the approval of the city council meeting minutes dated September eighth, twenty twenty five, September fifth, twenty twenty five, special meeting, and September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, special meeting and training. Approval of the claims report dated September twenty-two, twenty twenty five, and AB twenty-five dash zero eight four, city personnel policy handbook. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Is there any public comment regarding any of those items? Seeing none. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Johnson?
On the minutes for September eighth. Yes, September eighth. If we go down to the resolution number seventeen twenty-three authorizing a one tenth of one percent sales tax. At first, when I read it, I thought, wait a minute, we didn't vote to do that. And then I saw in the definitely not fine print, it's actually bolded as amended. So at first I was gonna say, wait, we didn't vote on that. And then I have to retract that and say, no, that's not what happened. But what it does say is as amended. Now, if I look at the amendment, it says amend the resolution to limit to submit qualifications. I think that a that the minutes should be something that clarifies what it was that we did in council. And I think that someone could reasonably misunderstand what that means or think that we did that and also to submit qualifications, but not understand what the limit was. So what I would like to do is just amend that amendment that says amend the resolution to limit to submit qualifications by adding at the end and remand adoption of the tax to F and A.
Second.
So are we following all that in September eighth?
Oh, yes. Good point. Remand discussion of adoption, not the adoption itself. I'm not trying to allow a three zero vote on that or something. But yeah, remand discussion of adoption of the tax to F and A. allow a three-zero vote on that or something. Yeah, remand discussion of adoption of the tax to F and A.
Check. I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so. So any discussion regarding it? Moved by Councilor Johnson, segment by Mayor Potem Holloway. Any discussion? Councilor Christian?
I think it sounds like a reasonable request. I think it's in line with the minutes. I don't think that, obviously, there was any ill intent or anything like that. But I think that it does clarify a bit what the discussions were, and I think it would be helpful for members of the public to see that, assuming there are no other issues with adjusting the minutes.
Do we have any questions? Okay, so approving your motion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it is amended as per the motion. So any other comments? Questions regarding it? Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And motion passes with the amendment. Next items removed that are from the consent agenda shall be added to the meeting agenda order of immediately following the consent agenda. So now we are adding the AB twenty-five dash zero eight two, purchase of the three new vehicles for water and stormwater divisions. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
I think Kat's got this one. She was chairing this meeting, I think. Is that right?
Councilor Cotton?
The adopted twenty twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget includes funds for the purchase of three new pickup trucks for the public works. Move to approve the purchase of three Ford F three fifty trucks.
Check it.
It's been moved by Councilor Cotton, segment by Mayor Potem Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding the purchase of the vehicles? CNN? Any discussion? Councilor Washington, you had this removed. Did you have any comments?
So I'm very pleased. I really like seeing that it's forty thousand dollars under budget. That's, I mean, you know, I think I speak for everyone here in the council and the residents of Snoqualmie. Sorry, too loud. The residents of Snoqualmie, that's excellent to see. So I just have three quick questions, just kind of reading through it. The first question, the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, are they coming out of capital fund? Second question, does it include the complete outfitting of the vehicles? That three hundred and sixty. And the third question, final question, if we decide to reallocate, because it came out of the biennial, do we, what would be the mechanisms to reallocate if we needed to, if and when we need to for the forty thousand?
So to take your questions in turn, and thank you, council, and good evening to you as well. My name is Drew Buta. I'm the Finance Director for the city of Snoqualmie. In essence, this is funding that is coming out of the operating budget as we speak right now, although these are typically capital ally purchases and so on. The challenging aspect to this is the CIP was adopted before the utility rate study. And so as a consequence of that, as a part of the utility rate study, these three vehicles were included. So the rates the council had passed back in May, for example, these were three vehicle purchases included as part of that. But we have to keep in mind that the utility funds are really one whole. And so while we may make this distinction between the operating budget and the capital budget in terms of utilities, they're all really paid by one revenue source, and that revenue source is utility fees. So if we happen to save money within the operating budget, those are funds that can be utilized, reallocated for capital purposes eventually. And so because we have saved some money here in terms of coming under budget overall, if we were to reallocate those funds towards capital purposes, they would help to ideally change the debt-to-cash ratio that we would have for certain projects, for example, which would ideally help to reduce the bond size and therefore reduce our interest expenses over time. When we think about that impact, what ultimately this has an impact on is to keep the utility rates lower or low for the most part. So I want to thank the Parks and Public Works Department for their work in terms of trying to figure out how to save money on this. We have Dylan back here that can speak to how we were able to accomplish that, and so I'll bring him up in just a little bit. But in essence, yes, while this is coming out of operating right now, these are funds that really impact the utilities as a whole and could be used for capital purposes in the future. In terms of the second question, this does include outfitting or upfitting costs associated with that. So I believe that we had estimated the vehicle cost at about seventy thousand dollars per vehicle, but the vehicle upfitting is roughly about forty thousand dollars in total. Now, people may see a truck, for example, not understand of all the technical pieces or the equipment that actually has to be incorporated into that vehicle in order to make sure that it's serviceable for our water division as well as our stormwater and urban forestry division that will be operating these vehicles. So as a consequence of that, our total cost per truck is roughly a hundred twenty thousand dollars, when you include not only just the vehicle cost, but also the upfitting cost, which is still less than what we had budgeted for. In terms of number three, when we talk about reallocating the budget overall when it comes to this, we would potentially come back with a budget amendment to council, assigning it to certain projects or potentially to other programs within the operating budget. And we are happening to, or will be going through a mid-biennial budget review here relatively within the next couple of months, too, in which this would be a great time to have this conversation about how we would want to allocate those funds or where we would want to put them to. So in essence, happy to have that discussion, council, but I think the primary takeaway point is whenever we save money here, this helps to keep the rates lower now and into the future. And so I just want to thank again and appreciate the Parks and Public Works Department for their service on that. So with that said, I'll bring Dylan up if you want to speak to how we were able to potentially get under budget on this.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'll keep it short and sweet. Essentially, we have been driving trucks and using them for all the things that each of these three utilities have to do. We've kind of identified situations in which it's underwhelming to have the wrong vehicle kitted with the wrong equipment. Especially when there's a snowstorm, and all of a sudden that truck can't plow snow or carry a sand spreader or do a variety of different tasks that a truck of a certain caliber needs to do. So we run into that problem a lot. We've identified a kind of class of vehicles that seems to be overwhelmingly beneficial for us to utilize. We have a lot of flexibility in that sense. We have different drivers, all driving the same types of trucks now. We have consistency across all of our equipment, including those sand spreaders, all the snow plows. I mean, all of our utilities guys, usually, not all of them, but almost everyone has a chance to drive a truck for snowplowing. And so major effort there is to homogenize a lot of our equipment. In doing that, we really learned what we need. And what that means, we came to the budget cycles, we identified basically what we needed, and we were trying to be very accurate in upfront, and a lot of that time and energy that we've spent in the last few years has gotten us there. So we were able to give a pretty accurate budget. The reason why we're under as much as we are is because we did not want to get to this moment and have to tell you that we were three thousand over on every truck. And that would, that was a big frustration for us that we've seen in the past, and so we're trying to be very accurate. We were very nervous when we were allocating the budget for this. The cost of inflation for vehicles was staggering, and the cost of that upfitting equipment, so the headac racks and lights, also pretty jarring to see, and the delays were jarring. And so lots of fears were wrapped in there, but we got a pretty good number, made sure that we were going to be excellent, and then brought that one forward. And that's what we have today.
Excellent. Thank you. I think this is the benefit of having institutional knowledge. So, thank you.
Councilor, any other questions? Okay. CNN, going on to vote. All of those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And motion passes unanimously. And the purchase of the three new vehicles for water and stormwater divisions is approved. Thank you. So moving on, public safety report. Is there a public safety committee report?
None tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Is there a report for Community Development Committee?
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Right, thank you. First community report for Parks and Public Works is AB twenty-five dash zero eight five, Kimmel Creek Lift Station Change Order and Project Update. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction motion? Or Councilor Cotton now?
The Kimmel Creek Lift Station improvements will replace aging electrical gear and provide more efficient operations at the WRF. The improvements are ninety percent complete, and the lift station is operational. During construction, necessary out-of-scope services were identified and are presented in change order number three. Move to approve change order number three with P's and S's Incorporated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Cotton, segment by Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? CNN, we have project engineer Andrew Vining here to answer any questions. Councilor, do you have any discussion or questions regarding this? Pastor Christensen?
I don't have anything that's particularly substantive, but in terms of going through the change order, one of the things that stuck out to me was that one of the revisions in red was that they needed to provide pigtail dongles to adapt to the existing four legaton general plugs to the terminal mugs. And I just had zero frame of reference. It sounded, I understand it is not made up. It sounds completely made up. So if you could explain to me what that is, I would greatly appreciate it. I laugh so hard.
Absolutely, yeah. There's a lot of words in our engineering business and public works that make you chuckle, but yeah, pigtail dongles is the most technical word that I know for large cables, we call them conductors, that will connect a generator, backup diesel generator, to, in this case, it was our water booster pump station that pumps water from downtown up the ridge. So a critical facility and early in construction, we determined that we needed those pigtail dongles to have that facility available during this project. And we purchased them. We'll have them available for future use when we want to use that generator, so.
Thank you. They're real. They're real.
Crystals.
Yeah. Any questions for Andrew? Anything else for the discussion? CNN, moving to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? The motion passes unanimously, and the Kimmel Creek Lift Station Change Order and Project Update is approved. Any further report for Parks and Public Works?
I don't think so.
How about Finance Administration Committee? Any further report?
No report.
And Community of the Whole, Council Liaison Appointment, Mayor Potem Holloway.
Let me make some preparatory comments. Si View Park District did turn out a task force to look at Snoqualmie Valley Aquatics Collaborative Discussion. Snoqualmie was within the geographical zone of what they considered their service area. Up until now, they have been making assertions without representation. And I really think it is beneficial if we are into that conversation and providing that representation in these conversations. To reflect on comments made prior this evening, this is not a change in direction at this time to go one pool or anything else. This is just, it is beneficial for us to be having conversations. And let's see where the mutual agreements are and where the disagreements are and have discussions around that moving forward. Okay? Further, I think, considering the size of the community to be represented, I am proposing that we not send one rep, but we send two reps. Okay, I will caveat that, that one council member has no authority, two council members have less authority. It's only when there's seven of us together, there is any authority to do anything. Okay, so just two. And that way you get two sources of information of how those conversations are going and how they're going to be reflected. Having said all that, I would like to propose that Councilor Cotton and myself be those representatives to the collaborative. And I know they voted last Wednesday on their side to extend the collaborative. I think we'll have discussions probably of timing, how often, whatever the administration of that discussion to come. So, but I think it is, again, best to be talking and best to be exploring. And to do that, we need to be there. So again, I would like to nominate Councilor Cotton and myself to be representative to that collaborative. May I have a second?
Second.
So Mayor Potem Holloway moved to, let's see, and Councilor Benson's second? Okay, and that would include, you said, Councilor Cotton and Mayor Potem Holloway to be representatives. Any further discussion?
We'll get them. It's not that kind of engagement.
So I also think it is important to be discussing this in the valley. I did request a similar meeting in May twenty twenty-four, and only one person showed up, so it's good. Because we do have a fully-designed pool that we would also like to collaborate about as well. And I would like our city administrators to be included in that.
Amen.
So Hugh, also, we need, just need meeting information, and he'll be there as well. So any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous. And we have council representation on the, what is the official title? If it's not, it's Snoqualmie Valley People Together. What's the title?
Snoqualmie Valley Aquatics Collaborative.
Okay, thank you.
Out of the Si View Park District.
All right. Great, right. Moving on, now have the mayor's report. So a couple of things. First of all, we do have the City Academy coming up next week, and council, you're invited to attend. The first one is on October first. And it's a six-week program behind the scenes. I think we have probably quite a few people that will be attending this. This Wednesday is also the Snoqualmie Valley Government Association Meeting in Duval. And I think there's one council member attending. Is there one? Anyone else?
This is this Wednesday, right?
It is this Wednesday. So it'd be great to have more representatives at the meeting, with additional council members. So we'll listen to them in the meeting, next meeting is as well. Greens Snoqualmie event is coming up on Saturday, October fourth, from noon to, nine to noon. And there's more information on the website. And following that event, the same day, is Love Snoqualmie Valley Volunteer Event. So that's from noon to three. So there's all types of opportunities on that day to volunteer. Congratulations to two Snoqualmie small businesses. You have Chickadee Bake Shop and Snoqualmie Ice Cream for being nominated for the King County Executive Small Business Award. And I had the honor of nominating both of them for, kind of, for basically their journey that that has been very inspiring from the devastating fire in April twenty twenty-four. They've worked tirelessly to rebuild, demonstrating tenacity, perseverance, and determination to build back their businesses. And so Snoqualmie Ice Cream, owned by Julie Chung and Heather Dean, they've continued to serve customers from a temporary location, and they're hoping to be in the original space in a few weeks. So that'll be, shortly, they will be reopening. And then especially congratulations to Chickadee Bake Shop, owners Dory Ross and Katie Patchwatt, Patchwitt, who are the finalists. And they're the top three. So there will be an award ceremony next week, so we will find out if they win that special award. But whether they do or not, both of those businesses are, I guess, winners in our view, and they're very important to Snoqualmie. More great news, the cities of Snoqualmie and North Bend signed the Police Services Agreement last week. Snoqualmie will continue to provide services to North Bend through the end of March twenty twenty-six. And this resolves the lawsuit and the financial burden on the Snoqualmie residents. Snoqualmie will continue to receive outstanding police response times and service. And we're looking forward to working with North Bend on future partnerships together. And a great example was this last week, we had a joint Economic Development Commission meeting with both cities, held at Meadowbrook Farm. And I'm also looking forward to my upcoming coffee with Mayor Miller. And with that, that is the end of the mayor's report. Do we have any community liaison reports? Pastor Christensen?
Sure. So I attended the SCA pick meeting in Mercer Island earlier this month. There were a few updates. The first is from King County Library, which has an annual budget of about a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. Ninety-six percent of those funds come from a property tax levy. They receive very limited state funds, and all of the federal grants were recently revoked. They are evaluating right now whether to go forward with a levy which they anticipate doing. They had previously considered going forward with a levy during COVID, but COVID hit, and then it was not a great time to go forward. Then they also considered doing one in twenty twenty-two as well, but wanted folks to be able to continue focusing on Wanted folks to be able to continue focusing on COVID recovery at that point. Uh, in twenty twenty four, they almost went into the negative, uh but they were able to avoid touching reserves very carefully. It's not likely to be the case this year. Uh, without a lid lift, they will run out of reserves in twenty twenty seven, which will require services to be significantly pulled back. And so they're currently doing listening sessions to evaluate the size of the levy in order to go forward, trying to figure out what the the right amount will be to ask the taxpayers to fund. If they're able to get a certain amount, they may be able to, you know, just keep current operations and maintenance going, keep existing facilities. They're able to, and feel comfortable going forward a little bit more. They may be able to expand hours, right? Uh, the other update is on the new indigent uh defense caseload standards. So when we talked last time, it indicated that they were preparing a draft letter. Uh, this is an issue that we've talked about a few times. Basically, basically, the Washington Supreme Court uh issued new uh indigent defense standards. It's going from four hundred cases or three hundred weighted cases down to a hundred and twenty case credits by twenty thirty six. It's a significant reduction. Similarly, for felonies, uh, current case standards are a hundred fifty cases, a, an attorney, and that'll be reduced down to forty seven. SCA is running a survey right now to figure out how cities are gonna figure out how to do that. Um, looking at what the operational impacts will be, including complexities with scheduling delayed proceedings, reassignments. As well as how they're gonna pay for it, whether that's gonna look like increasing taxes, fees, cutting parts of the city budget, charging fewer crimes. And other steps. Um, our city has responded, which is great. We will probably have a draft letter to share in about a week, um, which I'll circulate, and then we'll be voting at probably the first meeting in October. If you have any questions or want to discuss, let me know. Oh, also the YMCA uh board met last week as well and did their um planning session. I'll have updates on that, too.
They did their what?
They had uh their their board retreat. Getting together. We'll provide a further update on that shortly.
Yeah, there, Council Walton?
And thank you, mayor. Uh, last week you mentioned that uh there was a joint, first, the very first. Joint Economic Development Committee meeting between the two cities, North Bend and Snoqualmie. I, and uh, the one takeaway is that the two commissions will be uh putting together their top ten lists. And then coming back and and there were a lot of, uh, there was a lot of interest around um joint uh committees on tourism. Uh, we talked about affordable housing, transportation, so um. Uh, art as well and and how to integrate that with design of our downtowns and and what we can share in commonality. And uh, so watch for more uh news to come out of those two groups. And then uh, they'll uh find where there's um uh some overlap where they can uh work together. So it was a very productive two hours and appreciate Director Davis being there as part of it as well. So watch for more to come. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other updates? All right. We're at the end of our agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, no.
Oh.
I'm gonna move to second.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway motion, and then segment by Council Washington. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And we are adjourned at eight eleven, which is kind of a record.